President Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Duckett.
Here.
Commissioner Hansett.
Here.
Commissioner Lot.
Here.
Town administrator Carl Snyder.
Present.
Police chief David Burs.
Here.
Public works superintendent Darnell Bond.
Here.
Town clerk John Hudson.
Can we all stand for the pledge? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, um, do, does everyone consent to the agenda?
Yes.
Listen. All right, hearing no objections, we'll move forward with the agenda. And I'm going to read a closed session summary for the February twenty-second meeting. Hold it up over here. So, the closed session for February twenty-second, twenty twenty, was closed, I don't have the exact time written down, John, actually, but I believe it was closed at eight, like twenty-something, but it will be on that recording. And it was, so it was closed virtually and then moved to town hall. So I don't know if that location, but once it was closed, it was recessed and moved to town hall. It was closed under general provisions article three dash three oh five V one to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction and any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals, and to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation. So those who voted to go into closed session would be President Franklin, Commissioner Duckett, and Commissioner Hansett. It was unanimous of all three of us. Those in attendance were the three of us. No actions or votes were taken, and the topics discussed were a personnel matter and a matter that could potentially have legislation or litigation associated with it. Did I get that all, John?
You did. Perfect.
Right. Okay. And then we'll move on to the Women's History Month proclamation. It is Women's History Month, and I think it's actually International Women's Day today. So, go us, women. Does anyone have any questions? We're gonna just approve this for signature, but we'll take comments or questions first. Are there any public comments, John?
I don't see any hands raised as of right now.
Okay.
But what I do want to note that Commissioner-elect Colbert is actually in attendance tonight as well.
Oh, good. Do we have him as a panelist?
I will move him over right now.
Okay.
He is now brought over.
Okay. So, hi, welcome. Congratulations. And just, do you have any comments on the proclamation?
Hello, and thank you. I don't have any comments.
Okay. All right, so is there a motion to approve the Women's History Month proclamation?
Would you like me to read it first?
Oh, yes, John, I'm sorry. It's been a day.
That's all right, no worries. Town of Upper Marlboro Board of Town Commissioners proclamation in recognition of Women's History Month. Whereas the Town of Upper Marlboro recognizes that Women's History is an essential part of the town and of the United States. And whereas the month of March is nationally recognized as Women's History Month. And whereas Women's History Month is a celebration of women's contributions to history, culture, and society, and has been observed annually since nineteen eighty-seven. And whereas the twenty-twenty-two theme set by the National Women's History Alliance is providing healing, promoting hope. And now therefore it be it resolved that the Town of Upper Marlboro recognizes March twenty-twenty-two as Women's History Month. And be it further resolved that the Town of Upper Marlboro Board of Town Commissioners hereby recognizes the meaningful and significant contributions made by women to the history of the United States and the Town of Upper Marlboro in particular. And be it further resolved, the Board of Town Commissioners hereby encourages citizens' participation in events and programs pertaining to Women's History Month. Signed this eighth day of March, twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the Women's History Month proclamation?
So move.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor in alphabetical order, so, Janice?
Hi.
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 Motion passes. So we can move on to business. The first item on our agenda was the developer for the Marlboro Gateway Development was gonna come and present to us. But he actually, this plan that we're seeing here, he said is, has more density in it than he was looking for. So he's gone to his architect and wants some new drawings before he comes and meets with us, though. So this is an idea, but the buildings are gonna be shorter, is what he was telling me. So I think we're gonna have him here in April to meet with everyone. And he wants to know what we think and if we have any ideas, that kind of thing, so. Any questions about that?
No, it sounds like just preliminary drawings, so renderings, right, you said?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll just wait until we have something more a little bit concrete and definitive, I guess, based on whatever his suggestions are.
Yeah. Yeah, cuz it is like the second version I've seen and probably the third or fourth version, Kyle's seen.
Oh.
Okay. Yeah, it's, you know, they go, you go back and forth, you're planning something, you know. You wanna work out all those details, but having some, having a developer who wants to work with us and hear what we have to say about stuff is not extremely common, so we're lucky to have that. And if anyone has like comments and they just email Kyle, he can pass those on to the developer as well.
I'm trying to remember where.
This is kind of a cross from Dollar General.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Are there any hands, John?
I do not see any as of right now.
Okay, let's move on to the economic development firm, RFP, then. Go ahead, Kyle.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, so in everyone's packets, you can see a RFP, a draft RFP for a downtown economic development firm. So in the ARPA grant funding, one of the items for, that the board wanted to highlight on was economic development in the downtown area. We have worked with park and planning a bit, but it seems like the best course I should be for the town to kind of spearhead this project and fund this through the ARPA funds. As you can see, we kind of have a bit of a timeline on here. We're not asking firms to submit until July first, which means we could have it out there no later than June first to give everyone thirty days to submit. So we do have some time while we're planning and seeing which way we wanna go with this firm. It has not been before sustainable communities for any discussion. This is the first time the commissioners have seen it, so it's kind of just to see what kind of direction the board wants to do and see what kind of objectives and deliverables we wanna see this firm have. I know the mayor has some comments on it.
I think in the packet you can see my comment already. There, yeah. Did you want me to go?
Yeah, I'll jump right in, that's pretty much my spiel and.
So, um, when I looked at it, I didn't wanna pause this discussion cuz we all want this to happen. But I had been kind of thinking that it would be more how to attract the businesses, how to work with the developers, and less of the actual planning. Obviously, we need a plan to implement and we need a plan for funding. But as I've been working on the vision plan to some extent for a while, they wouldn't necessarily be starting from scratch with a plan. They could kind of come alongside and help, they could help us get the vision plan finished up while also providing some, you know, recruitment materials or ways to, you know, recruit businesses, that type of thing, and some, some implementation strategies. That was my thinking process. I don't know what the other commissioners think, so. I will turn over the floor for everyone else to talk.
So.
Did you have comments?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, is this, is this the same thing to do with the across from Dollar General? It's just part of the where the money's coming from?
No, so this is, the idea is we'll get a firm in, cuz we'd like to see more development happening downtown. We'd like to see more options, more restaurants, more retail. It need more parking, that kind. There's a, there's a lot of factors into making downtown thrive, thrive. And none of us are professionals in how to do that, so.
Yeah.
Get some professionals in to help us make that happen, cuz we can talk about it all day, but if we, we wanna see the change, we have to get some help on that, I think.
I think people that are experienced doing that can show us and narrow down some of the ideas, just like the, you know, a rendition or something. Kind of easy to picture something, then try to come up with that on your own.
So will they be, so this firm will be able to support us with like facade improvement, or at least giving some ideas about that facade improvement for our local businesses? And is that something that, I know in terms of applying, I'm just trying to recall, was there a grant and was that something that they would have to apply for in order to receive monies for a facade improvement? So can you tell us a little bit about that?
So Kyle, just step in if I get it wrong, if I get it wrong, but so with the facade improvement program, we get grant money and then there's a process through sustainable, sustainable working group to apply for that money, and then those applications go through them and then awards go out of money through the grant. And I think it's a great idea to have them support the facade improvement program, so I wrote it over here in the comments section.
Oh, you did.
That's kind of the discussion we're having, is what do we want them to do?
So. Are there any stipulations on them getting the money, you know? Do they have to be in good standing with their taxes? Is there, is there any stipulations that would prevent them from getting the money?
Oh, Kyle, that's a you question, I think.
Is that for facade improvement funding or the, yeah, so they have to be current with the town business license program, which in itself requires them to be current. Make sure they're in good standing with the state and that they have their taxes paid and whatnot. So that requirement of the town business license means that they went through those checks.
Okay, thank you.
Any other thoughts on what we would want an economic development firm to be doing for us?
Well, of course, I, I think there's quite a bit here, so I, I think definitely a good start for what we currently have, because overall, we need complete economic development support on every end to help us really figure out the strategy of how to grow the town, and if they're doing those things and that's listed in order to also draw more business to our town, how to go after some of those, I would say, maybe really just strategically helping us figure out what businesses best fit in our town also, and would probably serve our residents, because you, you know, we have like our local coffee shop, we have a restaurant, things of that sort, but it would be nice. I think our, our main thing, honestly, for me, is parking. I mean, it sounds kind of like, you know, one of those back subjects, but at the same time, if we don't find parking and find out how to incorporate that, rate that into our town and give people an opportunity to come and actually visit our businesses, then, you know, I, I don't know how, how we're gonna be able to thrive or at least get this off the ground and people feel comfortable, you know, to come and park, because I think that is a huge deterrent actually from even being able to and support our local businesses currently with all of the county business that's happening on a daily basis and, you know, so our local businesses are really struggling and competing for that parking.
Have we heard any feedback from the residents? Like, you know, how people that live in town feel about what we, the town needs or wants?
I know Janice probably has as well. I have heard a lot of, you know, feedback. People would like better, fresher, fresher groceries, fresher produce. They would like more retail shops, so they don't have to travel kind of up to Largo to grab something, you know.
I've heard retail many times.
I had a really cool meeting with a student, like in December, and he had this great idea for having a river walk and like having little kind of touristy shops along there. Gosh, Janice, what other.
That is really cool.
So many.
Yeah, that is super, yeah.
Well, car could drive back there and set up beforehand. That would be really cool.
Janice, what other things have you heard? Cuz I know you've heard more stuff, too.
Oh, yeah, well, of course, the, the parking part was, was, was definitely something that's top of mind, because if you're gonna have business, you gotta have a place to park, and so, yeah, those retail stores, of course, I would say, we have quite a, a collection, I would say, of, of businesses that, you know, currently downtown, which is really nice. But I think that, you know, we want to see our, the owners of our buildings actually, you know, being invested and make those places look like places of business, establishments of business, so I think there's, and with that in mind, I think that what I've been hearing is we just need to make the town look like a vibrant town, someplace that people wanna come and shop. Right now, I think, and what I've hear is some of the businesses aren't really distinguished, you know. If you go into some of those towns, you know, when I think about up in Annapolis and some other areas, they look like, like towns, and I mean, you know, so they have signs and everything is pretty much custom, so everyone knows, oh, well, you're within this uh, framework to be able to create or put out your signage, so everyone has some type of standardization for their business, and that is where the town comes in to help pull all of that together. So it, it's so much that could be done, but I think if we start with just making sure that our business, our local businesses, the owners of those businesses are invested to, to to make these places attractive, you know, I mean, you know, really, we have the facade improvement, but we need some support there as well.
I just wanna, before we keep going, I wanna make sure I wrote down everything from what we were just discussing. So support with a facade improvement program, a complete economic development support on every end, strategy on how to grow, how to draw businesses, what businesses to target, parking, how to support our current businesses, and how to get proper property owners to revitalize, and then kind of creating like a branding slash uniformness. Did I get everything? We just talked, we can keep talking, I just wanna make sure that I don't lose anything.
And of course, and of course, with the economic development, I would like to see some opportu, some areas they can incorporate for walking, just for walking, that, that's gonna be really important just to get around our town. I think this is a little bit difficult in some areas, especially from over by school lane, just to walk past your house, Mayor, and to come on. You know, you're taking a chance with your life just to try to get around town in some spots, in area. I think that that will be huge to having our local, our residents actually visit local businesses, just being able to walk to those places, cuz if we live in town, or even if you live, you know, as we start to annex, those folks are still close in town, close enough to get out and get a nice brisk walk, you know.
I think it's, I think it's important, too, to be able to walk from downtown down toward where Hueys and all that, you know, that intersection right there, that's hard to cross right there. And like you said, if people are gonna be walking from town, they might even walk down further, if it's more developed, you know.
So Commissioner Lot and Commissioner-elect Colbert, I don't know if you guys have some stuff to add?
Well, I just wanna know what kind of incentives are we giving the businesses besides, you know, to, to make them wanna make some changes, because they would have to spend money. I know that there's a grant, but, I mean, they're gonna have to come out of pocket, too, so what kind of incentives are we throwing their way to make them wanna participate?
That's a good point.
That could be something the firm looks into or suggests. We'll have them talking to the businesses, talking to the residents and the stakeholders as they gather all this to see what, what can work, so.
If they're not gonna talk to anyone, then they're not a good firm.
Are they out of pocket, or we have a grant?
This is ARPA funds we're gonna use for this, because it's of, you know, supporting the businesses.
Yeah.
We do have one public comment.
What, what questions?
Yeah, I was gonna give Carol's a chance, go ahead.
Uh, so just a couple of questions. I think one of the things Commissioner Duckett mentioned is very important in, in understanding, and Commissioner answered as well, what the residents wants. I, I think it would be good if they were able to initiate some type of survey to understand what are, you know, categorized, what type of businesses that, that individuals want. You know, we may all hear things individually, but until we kind of get, you know, X, X percentage of residents want this type of business versus that type of business, that can guide some of the strategy on how how and who we're recruiting businesses into the town. Also, is, are the funds for this specific to downtown revitalization? Or would we be able at some point to maybe offer, whether it be like an option or some other type of extended contract to do the same type of work for the areas that we would be annexing?
So I think the way this is written is it's beyond downtown, though right now we're kind of all focused on downtown. But I'm, I'm writing this down, kind of my vision, I don't know how everyone else feels about this, but is that the economic development firm would help us with planning, but then they would, they would kind of stay on to provide us for, as like retail spaces became open, then they could help us recruit people for them and that type of thing, and it, it would definitely expand to cover the whole town, cuz we don't want just a nice downtown. We want a whole nice town.
Yeah, that, that's, that's kind of where I was going with it. I wanna be sure that if we're, you know, starting from downtown and building out, that we're just kind of encompassing, you know, everything that's moving in. And then, one of the last comments I had on this was, you know, did we, or should we incorporate some type of final deliverables timeframe on this? I see a list of deliverables that are, that are all necessary, but I, I think we should be able to have some type of forcing function to say this is, you know, this is what we're driving toward, whether this is a six-month or a year information gathering process, and then we move into the next phase of recruitment or whatever. I think we should kind of figure out or develop what, what we would like that schedule to be, and then, you know, if anyone proposes to that or proposes something different, we can have that discussion at that time.
Okay. I'm gonna do that thing again and make sure I got everyone, all the commissioners stop and then we'll go. So pedestrian, walking, residents being able to walk to businesses, incentives for businesses, how are we making them want to participate? What do residents want? Having a requirement for the firm to do a resident survey. Making sure that it, this language incorporates the ability to work in all parts of town in newly annexed areas and having a schedule and timeframe for final deliverables. Got it? I got it?
Yep.
All right. So we'll hear public comment on this now.
First person's Patty Calatton.
Okay.
Hi, I wanna expand on your river walk. I think it's a wonderful idea. I noticed that you had bike and walking trails. I want a river trail. I want canoes and kayaks. The river goes all the way through town, and I'd really like to see a landing where we could put canoes and kayaks in and, and have it a, a landing place for someone who wants to stop by and maybe grab something to eat as they go up and down the river. There's a, when we go out on the river during busy times, not when we're just looking for pallets. There are, there, there's a lot of blockage that needs to be cleaned up. I'd like to get the river walker, or the river, river, river keepers maybe to come through and, and help us clean. I know they were talking about dredging at some point, but I'm not giving up on my kayak and canoeing.
I actually think it should connect down into, you know, there's like campsites for kayaking, canoeing, and tuxin.
There is, Irons Pot Landing is right, if you follow the western branch all the way out, you can get to Iron Pots Landing, which is near Billingsley, and they actually have a campsite there.
Yeah, yeah, so.
But I wouldn't mind having.
Tourism. I'm hearing tourism and small craft, so I'm writing that down.
Watercraft, small watercraft, small watercraft.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. Do we have anyone else with public comment?
I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay, all right, so we'll internally take these notes and the draft we have and mess with it and come up with something fresh for the twenty-second. And so we're gonna move on to the playground, Phase Two and Three update, and Kyle is gonna show us some cool drawings and numbers that are better than we thought they would be.
Absolutely, thanks, Mayor. So we'll go through the boring stuff first, the numbers, before we get to the designs and these other slides here. So as you can see, I broke out the different funding sources we have for Phase One, Two, and Three, along with the expenses we have from Sparks at Play. Just to catch everyone up to speed, about two, three years ago, the board put out the RFP for the Playground Designer. Sparks at Play was the only vendor that replied, so they were chosen for Phase One. Now we're looking into Phase Two and Three. Phase One is completed. We're looking to open it here in the springtime, once we get the, the perimeter fencing up and a temporary mulch pathway in place. And so we'll have Phase One open for the first couple of months of summer and spring while Phase Two and Three are being built. And then we'll definitely have some educational signage along, saying like, this is what's coming. But of course, to get to Phase Two and Three, we would need to enter into new contract with Sparks at Play. But as you can see for the funding sources, those are the funding sources there on the left, we have for Phase Two and Three, we have the FY twenty-twenty-one DNR grant that was awarded to us last year. We were still working through Phase One, so now that Phase One is finished, we actually requested the. We actually requested the a hundred thousand dollar um reimbursement from the state today. So hopefully we'll get that the next couple of weeks because we did pay the final bill for Sparks at Play. Um, of the phase one, so once we receive those funds, then phase one is fully completed um and closed out as a project. Um, and so you can also see where right now, we're waiting for the FY twenty two and the. Uh DNR grant for a hundred ninety two thousand, that is currently sitting in the budget, the state budget. Um, just waiting for final approval from legislature and also the FY twenty three bond bill. Um, for two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars that Senator Watson has put forth, Greenwell is working. To make sure that funding stays there and doesn't get cut or reduced or moved around, so um here in the next couple of weeks, once we know for sure, hopefully. That we're getting that a hundred ninety two thousand, two hundred seventy five thousand. Um, once we're at that point, I think we'd be um good to start looking at implementing a contract with Sparks at Play. Um, and as you can see, um the town would have to spend about sixty thousand in FY twenty three and out of its CIP program. We budgeted um fifty thousand for phase one, so sixty thousand for phase two and three is is not that bad. And as you can see, the total co- it cost um is a bit less than the funding we have, we just have a cushion in there. Um, in case overages happen or anything like that, we can, we're not going over budget. And then if we end up being under budget, we can either add some features to the playground landscaping, or we just return those revenues back to the town. Um, so that's the funding we're looking at, and I'm looking to request from the board in the FY twenty three budget. Let me see if I missed anything. Um, so if the board's interested, um as we go through all these and wants to uh move forward with entering into a contract with Sparks at Play. Um, I'll work with them over the next couple of weeks and we could potentially have a contract approved as early as the March town meeting. Um, the contract and the timeline that they're gonna put in the contract because we learned last time. Um, the permitting process takes a while, um some of that was due to COVID. Um, some of it was they were putting some heavy stipulations on the permitting process, they were treating it as if we're building a high rise, not a uh. A playground with a permeable base, um so it was pretty much zero stormwater management impact. Um, so just working through the permitting process is gonna be the most interesting, especially for the splash pad installation, because there's plumbing hooked up to WSSC. And we did reach out to WSSC to see if they would help us with the hook up fees or maybe help offset some of the costs because it's a community project. So are we to hear back from them, so that could help us bring the costs down overall. Um, but yeah, so the big two obstacles I see are the the permitting for phase uh two and three and um. Any questions from anyone for the funding part of it, yeah?
I did have a question on the um, the FY twenty three, the the bond bill, the twenty seventy five K. How, one, how confident are we in that, and two, do we have any contingency? Um, if if that doesn't go through, and three, how much of phase three of this project would be at risk if that doesn't come to pass?
Um, so it'd pretty much be with the town wanna come up with those that funding to keep up with the two hundred seventy five thousand. So we're pretty confident that it's gonna go through, um we have not yet had a request from the state that has failed. Um, and the project itself is pretty reasonable, we're not asking for anything crazy, it's a splash pad, benefit all the kids of the region. Um, so it sounds like it has the support of not just our elected officials, but some other elected officials that represent the upper Marlboro area. I know the mayor was on a call with Greenwell today, so I don't know if if you want, if what they said, I was working with the accounting firm.
So they, um they said the money's still in there, um it's now, the next few weeks are kind of them watching it. And making sure no one else tries to take it, um so that's sort of the phase we're in uh with this. I will say that when we did the playground um. Groundbreaking, the county council was also very supportive of this, I don't know if they can give us quite that much money, but they, we may be able to talk to them. They're, if they're listening, they'll be like, what did she say? But um, but we might be able to see that, but I think the bottom line to what's at risk is the splash pad is what's at risk if we don't get the money. Um, so we'd have to put that part um on pause and then try to get money next year or from different sources.
And there's some other options too, the town can either, we look at funding more out of CIP budget, which it it would be a bit of a lift for us, I'll admit. Um, but we can also look at some loan options as well, um and finance it over five years or something like that, and if we do get a grant next year, that could. Pay off the uh, the financing of it, so there are some options where. That we've looked into, but we haven't had to pull any triggers yet because it 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 looks like it's moving forward with that two hundred seventy five. Um, thankfully, the one ninety two, is it kind of in a package, DNR puts all the projects together, a couple dozen. Um, that are funded in a package and presents them to um the governor who moves it forward through the legislature. So that's a bit more safe than the bond bills kinda sitting out there by itself. Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yeah, it does.
Okay, so we're, keep our fingers crossed, worse comes to worse, we can make that happen, um. I think logistically and for the permit, it would be great if we can still move phase two and three together though. Versus trying to get a a third round of permits going. Um, and I did wanna highlight that they, one lift that they're gonna be doing is the way the lots are split. Um, part of phase two and three are gonna be on the town hall lot, so we're, they're looking at some options of having both lots merged into one. Um, but I'm kinda leaning toward them just shifting the property line over, so we have two separate properties and it's a lot cleaner for like insurance and whatnot. And we have two separate addresses, um but as you can see, John's going through the designs, uh phase two, as everyone knows, is a play structure for uh toddlers. Ages two to three, there is one customizable panel, you can see that kinda like pink panel there in the front of the train. Um, where we can put some information, um I guess we'll work the historical committee and the Chesapeake Beach Railroad Museum. Um, I think it's appropriate to maybe talk about some of the trains that ran um on that track. Because the the uh, the station has stuff about the location of the station and where it went and whatnot, so maybe focusing on some trains. Um, but that's, that customized panel can be decided a bit later. Um, the splash pad, as you can see, um this is a, we asked them to expand it off the first round. Because when we put these on social media, it got such a large response. Um, the little tiny splash pad that is maybe a fourth of its size that we were proposing, I knew it was not gonna cut it. Um, so we talked to Sparks at Play and they said that this is the, they could expand the size of the splash pad. Because we're buying the smallest pump size for the splash pad and it powers X amount. Um, so that's kinda more maximizes the smaller pump system versus what we had before was only operating like twenty five to fifty percent capacity. Um, they're not real fancy spray nozzles, we could get a lot more fancy, um. But we wanna keep costs down, so we're keeping stuff pretty generic, we're trying to tie it in with the railroad a bit, so that's why they they found the. The wet kids crossing sign kinda looks like a railroad sign, and they brought the color scheme in to make it economical. Um, and pretty much, it kinda is divided into three zones, if you have the next one. John, I think, there you go, you can see like there's a, it's kinda geared toward different stuff, you have the top zone, which you like the smaller, low impact sprinklers. Um, you have the the family zone and the dynamic zone, I'm not sure, I guess they're for older kids. I'm not sure what exactly they're they're geared for, but it does have that kinda different age range, you can go across the ages. Um, the splash pad will not be a part of the playgrounds, the playgrounds will be kinda fenced in together and we kept the splash pad, it's gonna be inside the perimeter. But it's not gonna have its own fence line, um like the playgrounds do, just so the kids can kinda run in and out and whatnot, and it does have a timer button. So if no one's there, it's not spraying water, it's not doing anything like that, and then someone has to go over and actually touch a button. And or run for five, ten minutes, whatever we decide. Um, any questions on the designs?
Yo, do you know um the dimensions of this, or was it in the?
I can see, uh let me see if I have.
It's just kind of hard for me to be able to kinda, you know, tell and get a good.
Like a aerial shot, I saw it somewhere.
Yep, so that's uh obviously, once we prove them for Sparks, that, I mean, that kinda gives you perspective.
The kids and and estimate.
On there, that's in the pack, in the packet. There's a map in the packet, um right after all the Sparks at Play, boring line item things. Um, there's a map, so it pretty much is the length of our parking lot, um and a little bit more. Twenty kids, I'm sorry, Commissioner, what'd you say?
I'm sorry, I I think it's gonna be a destination, like they're gonna be in a parking.
That's something the mayor and I decided, or we're discussing, um so we're gonna have all parking at the Board of Education lot, we do have a agreement with them. Um, obviously, depending on the success of this, um we can control when it's on and off, so we can set the hours for that. So if it, our big obstacle I think is during the day with the Board of Education staff being there, we don't want. Them to take all their parking over, um so that could be something if we see a huge usage of it, we can shift like on Monday through Friday. It doesn't start until, the the timers don't start till five o'clock, um so I mean. Yes, Commissioner Law?
Um, I'm sorry, are we gonna have like um, a capacity like limit? Instead of, you know, having so many, cuz the the park is, the the splash park is not really big from what I could tell from the dimensions. So I'm just wondering, are we gonna have to limit the amount of people that can be in there at one time?
We could have a rough, we could have a sign with a rough estimated, but we're not gonna have anyone there policing it, so pretty much the same for a playground, there's no one there police. Um, policing a capacity limit versus like a pool, for instance, is where you have to limit capacity because that's a uh. A safety issue, you have the lifeguards watching over it and stuff, but here there's no drowning risk, um. So that's gonna be the thing is uh, it's gonna be treated like, pretty much like a uh, like a playground, um there's really.
Another question, what about um, do we have to have insurance for this?
Yeah, yeah, it'll be under, so right now, phase one is already under playground insurance with uh the town's insurance company, so we have Legit, which is a. They specialize in government insurance, um so they know we're doing the splash pad, they know we're doing the playground, so phase one is actually already fully insured. Um, and it didn't cost that much, um maybe a couple hundred a a year. Um, so that's insurance, we haven't gotten until we get the final designs and dimensions, we can get a quote for the insurance, but I don't see it being. I don't even see close to a thousand dollars a year for insurance, but yes, we will get insurance, the whole park will have an insurance package on. Yes.
Uh, it's permeable, so there's not gonna be any pooled water, it looks like, so that's gonna be completely safe.
Yeah, so it recycles the water, so all the water just goes right back into drains into a holding tank, and then it'll pull from the WSSC main. As it knows, like water's evaporated or it's on the. It'll refill automatically, um and there will be, of course, a cost for water and some chemicals, um cuz it's all automatic chemical feeds. Um, and there's, there's gonna be a little mechanical room with the pumps, but.
Um, Kyle, can you tell what the base of it is made of, is it that rubber type?
It's concrete, um it's kinda like, it's grippy concrete with permeableness, so it all drains through.
Slippery is the problem, right, Kyle? The like mushy stuff?
Oh, yeah.
Exactly what I was gonna ask about.
The rubber, so it's, this is a cement base with a concrete system, that's what you see for a lot of these splash pads, so I mean. If a kid falls, they could hurt themselves, but it it's, I mean, it's relatively safe, this is the. This is the standard design.
And we'll, you know, we'll keep in touch with the school board as things go on, so we don't strain our relationship with them over parking. We'll probably talk to them when things are getting going and, just so everyone's reassured on.
I imagine uh there's some type of lighting built into this as well, cuz I imagine if we're. Uh, and I know this is just an idea that you threw out there, Kyle, but if you're, you know, maybe not cutting it on till five o'clock during the week. Um, due to the school board agreement, I know it's not gonna be on all night and summer, you know, the base may be pretty long, but just thinking about. That dusk, that kind of turnover time period, is there any type of lighting that would make it, just increase visibility all around?
Yeah, we can uh look into that with some solar paint or solar powered lights, um if the if the board wishes, cuz I know it's gonna be cut off at. The parks will be dawn to dusk pretty much, um Fridays, like you said, it's gonna be difficult. Um, with the five o'clock, hopefully during the summer months, it's kind of a bit, um, cuz it's only gonna run for pretty much for like. Late April through, we'll try and keep it open as long as possible, um depending on the weather. Um, but that's something we can look into, um is some lighting options.
And there's other solutions to deal with the parking, um you know, we could. Work on an agreement with them where like we have so many parking spaces and we almost monitor. You you know, that would be kind of annoying for them cuz they would have to put a parking pass in their window, but we could monitor the parking for them. To keep people from going beyond, Chief probably has something to say about that cuz I'm just brainstorming, but there's other options than just turning it on at five, so.
And we do have a grass lot on the opposite side of it, um that we have permission from Board of Ed to put some permeable. Um, like grassy parking area, that stuff you put down, the grass can still grow up, but people can park on it, that way there's a parking off of. Old Crane Highway access, um so that's a future phase we can look into seeing if we need that extra parking, but that could add an additional ten spots or so. Um, but the big thing is we're trying not to have parking at town hall, um because it's already pretty crowded at town hall. So to access that besides a maintenance gate, you'd have to go around into the main entrance that faces the uh. The Boys and Girls Club fields, um cuz that was something we worried about, it was like kids running into town hall, well now they can't cuz of this, everything's locked up. Um, but running into town hall or filling up the whole parking spot so that people coming in for town business don't have a place to uh park. So that's something we're gonna be monitoring, and uh Chief actually had a, the security firm install a wide lens camera to keep an eye on its area as well. Um, so that a camera at town hall that's watching the park. And that Darnell has a question.
Alright, good evening, everyone, uh I just had a quick question, I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this, but I have to ask. Is there any sort of maintenance agreement of, at least for the splash pad or anything like that? And if not, will there be some sort of staff training so that we uh can troubleshoot, uh learn how to winterize it, things of that nature?
Yeah, so it'd be completely on us, Darnell, um so there would be staff training. In my past life, I actually have my pool operator's permit, so I just have to do a quick refresher and I can help you with the the uh. The pumps and chemicals and stuff, but it is gonna be something, the whole lake playground's gonna be a a maintenance is on us, um but of course, once they install it, they're gonna tell us. How to maintain it and give us some extra parts and paint and stuff like that, um.
Our Public Works Director is gonna handle it.
I knew the answer before I asked.
Are there any more kind commissioner or staff questions or comments and, so we can see if public has anything?
I think it sounds good.
Alright, John, are there any hands up?
I do not see any hands at this time.
Okay. Alright, then we'll move on to the FY twenty three budget. And I, I need to start this conversation off uh with making the announcement that. Um, our Finance Director Will Morgan is no longer with the town. We will talk about the HR accounting end of that uh later in this meeting. But as for the budget end of that, um your highly competent treasurer, Commissioner Duckett. And myself, uh working with Town Administrator Kyle Snyder and our consultants are going to be building the budget. Um, so I guess, you know, Kyle's gonna take it away on taxes in a minute, but um. We're still moving forward to build a budget that is extremely accessible to the public and provides a lot of extra information. But, you know, if you have questions or concerns, contact us, let us know. Uh, we wanna make everyone comfortable with the process, um and we do have our, we we have some skills ourselves, but we also have professional help. So, I'll turn it over to Kyle now.
Thanks, Mayor, um so as uh everyone's aware, on last year, the Board of Comis- Thanks, Baron. Um, so as uh everyone's aware, um last year, the Board of Commissioners passed a a resolution to set a tax plan in place. Um, the town um tax rate for residential had not been touched in in several decades. We actually went back um through the records uh past the eighties into the seventies um and didn't find when that tax rate was changed. Um, so it was at point two four cents per hundred dollars less value um way lower than the next um up municipality, which is the city of College Park. Um, their tax rate is point three one five. Um, so with that, the town looked at the uh everything we're trying to put forward, economic development, C I P um public safety upgrades and whatnot and and saw the need to uh ensure there was revenue being generated. Um, one of the reasons the tax rate stayed so low in the past was the town was collecting a large amount of uh income taxes from the Upper Marlboro zip code, um hundreds of thousands of dollars extra. So the town didn't need to raise taxes. They were getting two, three, um, I think sometimes upwards of five hundred thousand dollars in um income taxes from areas outside of the town limits, but fell in the Upper Marlboro area and people would mark that they've lived in the town and the state didn't check that. Um, so that was an item back in, I think, twenty sixteen, the town ended up paying back eighty thousand of that. Um, but then the um state delegation and the state the state body, because it was it wasn't just upper Marlboro effect, it was across the state. Gaithersburg with millions of dollars um in the hole and whatnot on that. Um. So that the state waived all that requires everything. All loans are for everything's forgiven. The state decide legislature decided that uh the municipality was the fault of the state accounting. Um, so that was any, it wasn't any fault of the municipalities and a couple of the municipalities actually brought this to the attention of the state. Um, so that was one of the big reasons the property tax stayed so low. Obviously, we're not getting that much income tax anymore. So uh the town was looking at other ways. Parking was a big revenue source that generated twenty five thousand dollars a month up until COVID hit. Um, I don't think we're gonna see those revenues come back anytime soon um as the courthouse has shifted some stuff to virtual and they're shifting items out of the C A B. Um, so definitely um the town's looking to uh ensure its tax base is strong um and can fund the efficient um government operations that everyone's come to hopefully love. Um, so with that tax rate proposal last year, um and I'm pretty much gonna focus on the residential property tax. That's the one that kind of sees a bit most of the change that affects the constituents. The commercial property tax does not have it it it's going up two cents. Um, it'll go up another cent next year if everything, if if the board wishes to continue its plan. Um, but the residential property tax, the residents did see the largest hike they'd see of six cents last year. So last year went from point two four cents to thirty cents. Um, as of now, the town is still the lowest rate. However, if the board chooses to go forward with the uh the F Y twenty three rate to go to point three four cents per hundred dollars less value, um we will become the municipality with the second lowest residential taxes, so we would surpass um the city of College Park. They do not fund a police department at all because of the University of Maryland Campus Police um have jurisdiction a large amount of the city, so it doesn't make sense for them to field their own police department. So that's a whole department that they don't have to fund. Um, so I just want to highlight that's the reason that the city of College Parks is so low after the city of College Park. Um, we don't see any the next lowest or in like the the high point three eight to forty cent range is the city buoy, and then we have other ones that go up to point nine two. Um, the town of Colmar Manor. So there's there's a wide range. We're at the lowest a long time. This would if going through would step us into the the second lowest, which is still very low. Overall, um at this time, staff does not recommend the board consider going over forty cents for residential. Um. But with its plan, um it would reach um, I think forty cents in the next and by twenty F Y twenty twenty four would begin the the small incremental rate every two years um up until F Y twenty twenty six, so about uh ten years out. Um, so at the bottom, you can see here, the average property in town is about two hundred thousand dollars. Now, this is the um assessed by this is not what the house sells for or what Zillow estimates it to be. This is the state assessed value of the property, which is usually a lot lower because I know probably some assessed by two hundred thousand dollar houses in town are going for four hundred in its market. Um, so it's at the state assessed value, not at the market value. I just wanted to highlight that. Um, so as you can see, if a property is valued at two hundred thousand dollars, um you they're gonna see their town taxes go up eighty dollars. So they're not paying thousands in town taxes. When you see your property tax, you're paying thousands in taxes, the large majority of that's going to Mall National Capital Park and planning and Prince George County and the Board of Education. Um, the town takes a very small part of that, roughly six hundred eighty dollars if this goes through. Um, so I just wanted to kind of put that in perspective for everyone, what that what that would look like. Um, as you can see here, I calculated the anticipated additional tax revenue. Um, so every year that this town gets um some documents from the state. Um. And that gives us our total assessed base value that they're working off the calculations for the upcoming fiscal year. Um, and so pretty much that's what we balance that off. You can see one column is just the tax rate stays the same, but the assessments go up because we we did have a couple houses built. Maybe some people got their houses reappraised or something like that and the assessment value went up. Um, but that's why you see that small increment. Um, and then the second column is the additional revenue with both the additional assessed value and also the um increase in taxes. So that you see about thirty three thousand dollars going up on which would fund an additional rough half the salary of an additional police officer. Um, are there any questions so far? And the mayor can feel free to to hop in because I know we've been talking about that's um but that these tax rates I also want to highlight would not go into effect or not finalized until we pass the fiscal year budget in June. So this discussion now is very preliminary. We have a couple of months to go um before they're approved in June. So even though the resolution was approved last year, it's just a resolution. It does not actually go into effect until the tax rate is included in the budget ordinance when it's passed, so.
Yeah, I think you did a good job covering everything, Kyle. I mean, I think, yeah, last last year, you know, Commissioner Duck and I, along with Mayor Knoyer, kind of went through all the needs and um explained kind of why this needs to happen, but we can, yeah, we can field any questions. So if other commissioners have questions or comments. Do that.
Not at this sound.
I was running that. That was a good presentation.
It's a lot of information, I know, so. Do you want to take public comment before we hop into the new proposed kind of break it up? Okay.
Yeah, I think because but yeah, let's take public comment now and then we'll do the next section. We probably should split it up on the agenda, but that's okay.
I have.
Okay.
Hi, I just wanted to know, um, with this tax increase, what are you actually earmarking for the increase in taxes?
So we're not earmarking anything necessarily. Um, it's a matter of services and road paving and a lot of other things, but um we can lay out, we'll lay all that out um throughout the budget process and have kind of a better answer than that off the cuff one for you by the end of um this budget cycle.
Thank you.
Hmm.
It sounds like it's being used as a uh to make up for the loss of some of the revenue in town as well.
Hopefully we'll have some graphs and charts and that kind of thing in the budget and that answer will be there in the document, so. Any other public comment? I know I I might have sent John to the door. Let's. Okay. All right, so um then I guess we will move in to.
Back on the two.
We're gonna. Huh?
Oh, uh, the.
Yeah, this is the revenue. Oh, the vacant?
The vacant, yeah, if you go back one more slide, John. I was just gonna have the vacant property tax, the agriculture tax, so as some other um it, are you good with me covering that, Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, yeah. Um, so the um there's two tax rates we're looking at. Staff have been looking at and analyzing based off as we annex and grow um and different properties we bring in. Um, one is the vacant developed real property tax. Um. So um as we go through the downtown and look at economic development, um there's a couple of property owners who own a large amount of property within our town. Um, not every building is owned by one person, I think. Probably seventy five percent is owned by two. Um. And definitely as we annex and grow, we see some other vacant properties. So pretty much what this tax is meant to do is if a commercial lot is developed. So we're not talking about if a commercial lot has trees on it or grass or, you know, I mean, or something like that, that that doesn't apply to that because it's not a vacant structure blight or anything. It's nature and trees. We we love that. Um, but a vacant developed property, so a building that is built that is vacant or mostly vacant would be assessed a higher tax rate. Um, if it it's sad to make it a couple criteria, which we can work out if the board's interested in looking into it. Um, but pretty much they would be assessing a much higher tax rate to incentivize the um property owners to to fill it or revitalize it or sell it, um but just not let it sit there and rot. Um. So the city of the Mount Rainier is the only municipality that does it. They have a rate of two dollars and fifty cents per hundred dollars less value. Um, because if a vacant, if a building's vacant, it creates a there's there's light, there's um, there's no business in there generating revenue generating jobs. Um, now there'd be a couple of things like if the property's under construction, um like it has a valid county building permit, it would not apply and some other instances, we can go into detail, but that's uh one thing we're looking into. If the board's interested in passing that, it would probably right now um without phase two or three annexation applied to maybe one or two properties. Um. It'd be under the uh the town administrator's office would be the one kind of overseeing that and the property owners would have to apply or request to be taken out of that tax bracket and put back in just a regular commercial property tax. Um, so we would send them a letter like, hey, your building is vacant. Um. As of this day, we're gonna assess uh this tax rate for it. We'd give them the heads up if if they don't fill it or they don't do anything with it, they'd get the new rate. And it would stay under that new rate until it's sold and the new owner approaches us saying, hey, I just got a tenant. It's good. And then we take it off the next year. We'd report it to the state, so.
I think that's a really good idea.
He's. Was it Janice's idea or was it Kyle's idea? One of you two had the idea last year.
He's got ideas going all over the place, so. Um, that's the vacant, and then I can just touch on the agriculture use real quick and we can go through all the comments. Um, so agriculture tax rate as we annex and grow, we may see some new agricultural um properties come in, which which we love. That's a part of the history and the heritage of the town. Um, and also we don't need to see overdevelopment. Um, and just having that access to health, healthy fruit and fresh vegetables and stuff. Um, would go a long way. So we're looking and of course, a farm does not require the same level of services as a commercial property. So that's the the thing we look at as well. So it'll we've seen a possible tax rate for an agriculture use property. It does not have to be zoned agricultural. It would have to be the town, it would have to go through a process, a vetting process internally with us, where most of it is used for agricultural and we can set those criteria, but that would in the next five years, we probably won't see a lot of it, depending how large the town grows, pricey one or two properties doing that. Um. Obviously, if the primary use of space is something else, like if it's a a house on it that is they their whole yard is a farm, we have to approach that um case by case, but those are some two kind of ideas for tax brackets that we could
Yeah, and there's actually a couple of farms, you know, down old crane um that could potentially be in annexation areas, so we want to make it um something that isn't such a a hard thing for people to see, you know, there's benefits, but you know, you're not suddenly paying a residential tax rate if your farm comes in. Do you guys have any questions, comments?
I took a little long to to come up you previously, but I I do uh like the idea of the the vacant development uh property tax. One of the one question I had about the um the residential property tax, is that increased, you know, the step over step increases, that kind of commensurate with other municipalities in the way that in the the rate at which they're increasing their taxes? Are we kind of, you know, trying to make up some ground and it's slowing down? Or what's what's kind of the uh thought process behind the the uh the percentage increase year over year?
Sure, yeah. Um, so it's kind of a mix of both. We're we're making it ground um because we we sat so low for so long. So there was a need to step up into kind of where everyone the lower part um of the other twenty seven municipalities is. Um, but the increases, six cents was probably the biggest one. Um, one of the biggest increases people will see, um, a whole lot of municipalities aren't increasing that much because their rates are like um, for instance, uh Berwyn Heights is point five seven. So if they went up six cents, that's the the they're already paying a lot in taxes. That would um be a a higher amount of taxes. So I think the six cents is kind of unseen now that we're in like the two cent this year or four cent this year, four cent next year. Those are a bit higher uh in the tax steps, but definitely once we get to like the point zero zero five rate. Um, that's where we're kind of seeing municipalities now, but maybe a couple decades ahead of us in in their tax bracket increases.
And I was just gonna step in and say like for some context, we were concerned last year about upping uh upping all at one time because we still were kind of in this weird COVID place where, you know, people were definitely, I mean, people are still struggling. Um, but it it felt like a harder thing to throw out all at one time last year. So that was part of that reason we decided to split it up.
We can do some more digging to see if um I think on average, when I see municipalities raise rates around one and it like half percent or um one cent, two cent. Um, but some of these municipalities have much larger budgets and a base than us, so one or two cent increase would generate a couple hundred thousand dollars versus our maybe thirty thousand dollars as well. Um, but obviously they have more services to provide off those are a greater need. Um, but I I can, I'll look for a couple of examples. I know that the town of Capitol Heights last year, when we were going through this tax rate program, they were the only ones at the time who were considering a tax increase. Um, the city of College Park is probably not considering a tax increase because they're seeing so much development that they're kind of having issues spending money. Um.
But they don't have police yet, so they're not a good.
There, they just built a forty three million dollar town hall. They're doing all right. Um. So, but I can look around and see what uh what some other municipalities have done in the past couple of years. And Prince George is is usually where we keep it. We really for tax rates, we don't really look outside of the county uh because we have twenty seven other municipalities to pull from um of sizes similar to ours. And once you go outside the county, then demographic shift and stuff like that, so.
No, that makes sense. And I'll just ask one more question that doesn't necessarily have to be answered right at this moment, because I know we've we've moved on to a different section, but as as these, you know, the these rates are stepping uh year to year, are we keeping in mind kind of what the uh percentage of each of these revenue streams we're we're hoping to keep? Um, but basically, we're trying to keep a certain, you know, uh uh percentage of the revenue stream for the town is coming from residential property taxes versus commercial property taxes and that the step rate increases are in line with what we're anticipating. Though that kind of mixed to be.
You just gave me a good graph idea.
Yes, um, that really has been tracked in the past. I know with our new budget this year, um, at least that was one of the things that I had in my mind. There's a lot of places show like the overall expenses, like different percentages for each category and also the revenues where we get our revenues from. Um. So that could be something to show as well, the shifts. Um. And make sure we're not going huge percentages over. Um, COVID has threw some stuff into flux. Like I said, parking used to be a huge revenue for us at twenty five thousand, and that's suddenly dropped off. We're down to like crept up to maybe nine thousand a month. Um. So I don't think hopefully we won't see any sudden changes like that anymore. Um, but yeah, I think that's a an excellent point to make and track. And hopefully, one thing is as we kind of develop these more comprehensive budgeting processes, we can look more back at more historical data. Um, once we've stabilized as well, so and that historical data is always great for budgeting and acting. Um, once we've stabilized as well, so, and that historical data is always great for budgeting and acting purposes versus guessing.
We're not guessing.
No.
I was hoping everyone. Should we go on to revenues? Which is educated guessing, technically, I guess. So, um, these are some draft revenues, um. Will Morgan had started uh, working on revenue um, projections. Kyle Snyder, Town Administrator Snyder, and I sat down and kind of went through this. A little bit and made some adjustments, and um, these are now going into the hands of. Um, some professionals so they can take a look at them and give us some feedback, make sure we're not. The biggest concern we have here is if we overestimate our income and then, you know. Put our spending out too much, we're going to be in a spot, so we want to make sure that's, um. That's covered, and this isn't the only time we're going to discuss this, so we're going to talk about it a bunch of times, um. I don't know if Kyle, you wanted to like highlight anything, or if we just want to see if anyone has questions, concerns, et cetera.
I can highlight a couple areas, so definitely the taxes that we just discussed, some of these figures are pulled straight up, um, right now they're based off of. The current, um, the future tax rate, um, the proposed FY twenty-three tax rate. Until the board decides otherwise, um, so I just wanted to highlight that, but these are taken into consideration. The increase, the slight increase in assessments we received, as well as those new um, tax rates, um, so that's where taxes comes into play. Um, looking at parking meters and parking fines, we're kind of looking at historical data there, it's. That one's a tough one, it's a moving target because the courthouse is closed and reopen and close and reopen, and that has a direct effect on our our parking meter rate, so I think if. We're estimating right on point, um, historically even before where we were looking at for uh. Fines and penalties, so that's that's a large chunk that that we're looking at historical data for. Um, some other items that we have not used previously, um, town hall services, um, because town hall is closed for the past almost two years. Hopefully we open it, um, here soon in the next week or two, um, but town hall services, two hundred fifth, that's notaries and stuff like that, but also room rentals. Um, business licensing is something that we've discussed and looked at, we saw a huge increase in business licensing. Um, now that increase is because this is the first year of our new business license program. So obviously, we're not going to get that every year because it's a two-year license, um, so hopefully we get to a point where that equals out pretty well. As new businesses come in on off years and whatnot, we'll see that kind of, we'll have a better mean. Income for business licensing, um, so we didn't want to estimate it at the full twenty thousand we got this year because a bulk of the businesses applied for their two-year licenses this year, so. Um, we cut that back a bit. Um, because we know there's some businesses that have not gotten theirs yet, um, trader license fee, franchise fee. Those are historical based, those are pretty much the same, red light camera right now we have at zero, um. Until we actually install a red light camera, get that operating, then we can start. Um, estimating that value, that those funds are however limited into what we can do. Um, once we get the red light camera, red light and speed, I should say, that's what those are, or red light and speed cameras. Once they are up and running, we may consider creating a separate budget for them. So the revenue would be pulled out of the op town operating budget and placed into a completely separate red and speedlight budget that funds different. Um, parts of the police department, so in the operating budget of police department, we may see some line items disappear and shift over to the red light speed camera program. And then that allows the the town government to kind of shift those funds um, into some other categories like public works, um. Public education broadcasting is about the same, um, that's based off historical data. Highway user fees pretty spot on, the state sends us a letter every year about what our highway user fees are going to be, and uh, they sent one that's saying our fees are going to be thirty-one. Three ninety-nine, so that's where that number comes from. I think that's about it for revenue, so.
Yeah, we'll talk about this more and um, what I'd like to do with with, you know, everyone kind of is, if you have questions. Um, we may not have answers right away, we may write them down and then bring answers later. Um, I know that we were supposed to have a meeting last week about this and we didn't, so. I am going to make myself available via Zoom on Saturday at four o'clock. If people want to ask more questions, I can't say I'll have answers for you, but I can write down your questions so I know. What answers we need, um, and if you want to talk about anything else, so I'll be on for an hour, we'll get that link out. Um, do commissioners have questions or comments about revenues right now?
I just have a quick question, what is the broadcasting? Fee, it's a public education slash government broadcasting, I'm just curious.
So that's fees on any video services within town limits, so Kyle, uh, you can maybe elaborate, but.
Comcast, if you have Comcast bill, Verizon cable bill, um, there's a small fee on your bill and it go, that goes to fund our cable access channel. Um, so that we've historically, our cable access channel has run. Kind of free, uh, it's been pie- pieced meled, um, we've been improving it over the past couple of years, so hopefully we're going to use that funding actually in the future budget. To actually, um, upgrade it a little bit and uh, pay for a firm to to kind of keep it maintenance, so that'll be a discussion we we talk about when we get to the uh.
Yeah, I don't have cable side, even though we have a channel.
Yeah, okay, yeah, uh, Verizon Channel nineteen, um, that's what that's. Used for, supposed to be used for, we haven't really used it, the revenue is kind of going to the general fund and sometimes we pull from it.
Thank you.
Um, so it's getting a little late, so I don't, I just, if anyone else has revenue questions, and then we may kind of. Want to push committee budgets off to the next meeting. So that we can stay within time, because we have um, some people waiting to talk to us to the end of the meeting. And did any other commissioners have questions, so we can hear public comment?
Not at this time, thank you.
Everyone is okay with pushing committee budgets to our next meeting, I don't actually have all the committee budgets yet either. Um, and that's kind of like a transition element that I need to get on. Um, with those committees. John, is there any public comment?
Yes, I have Patty Callicott.
Okay.
Um, just, just a quick couple of questions, um, I'm looking at the parking meter that was set at one forty-five and we've only got fifty-four thousand that we've actually accrued over the year. So why are we still putting that budget up to one twenty-five, are you anticipating, is it, is this based on historical data? And then the other question to go with that would be, uh, when I'm looking at public utilities. Um, going from five seventy-five down to five fifty, but you've only, you haven't even met a three hundred thousand. So where are you anticipating these incomes coming from that are increased?
Yep, so uh, for parking meters, that is based off historic data, it, the big thing is the courthouse closure, so, um. Even though the courthouse reopened over the summer, it did close again in the fall. So it dropped, um, it reopens again fully to jury trials as well, that's where we see our big increase in parking is when we, they have their jury trials. Because they're bringing a couple hundred people into the downtown, um, a couple times a week to fill the juries, whether or not they actually put on a jury or not. Um, we we see a large volume of parking when they bring jury trials back, so jury trials have not been going on for the past three or four months. Um, so that's now the courthouse is reopening fully, um, we'll obviously see how COVID spikes over the next couple of months up until June. Um, but that's based off of the the historical data of the courthouse being open, um, for a full year. So that makes sense for the parking part.
I think we'll, so these are two questions that I actually asked Kyle about, and we kind of. Put some numbers in for tonight and we're going to talk more about, so I've written them down. And um, those numbers will probably be in flux and also like. I'll have a better, like when we got, get with the experts, we'll have a better sort of. Estimate, hopefully, I think, not that Kyle's estimates aren't good, they are, just. So that's kind of the plan for those two things, but those were definitely things that I I was chuckling when you were asking because they were my questions. Uh, is there any other public comment?
Patty still has her hand up.
Uh, the red, just the red light camera.
Right, so.
How's that estimate coming?
Yeah, um, so that's another thing I don't have an answer for right now, but we will get that for you, so.
Uh, do we have a date for the implementation of the red light cameras, though, in order to be able to actually put it in a budget? I hate having a budget when you don't actually, you don't have it implemented, and if you, if you have a date for implementation where you know you're going to get income. That's one thing, but putting it in a budget when you have no income does it that well.
Okay, so I've def, I've put those two things down for more information that we'll have. Um, for the next discussion. So that's act, so those questions get answered, basically I'm collecting questions because I don't want to half answer them. I want to answer them fully, alright, so are there any other questions from the public comments?
No other hands are raised.
Alright, so I've got all these notes and um, we're gonna kind of go past the committee budgets unless any commissioner have objections. Alright, so to go on to the administrative and staff items. Um, I want to start off um, by talking a little about the finance HR situation. Because we have um, some folks who want to talk to us about what, how they can help us um, over at town hall. So, uh, without having Will Morgan in house, we do fortunately have an HR firm. Uh, they were here on Monday, they are taking on, you know, continuity with the hiring, um, any. Employee paperwork, all the benefits, they're going to take on all those HR elements for us, and they're going to be. Right, right now, everyone's kind of working on an hourly basis, um, to cover that, but they're going to be bringing us a proposal. To let us know how much it's going to cost in the long term. Um, we had the accountant fir, accounting firm within today, um, working with Kyle, looking at, you know, QuickBooks. And uh, they processed our payroll because that's right now, it's super easy for them to do, uh, and just looking at all of our other files. Um, so. That's kind of how that's being handled right now, we have um, one accounting firm and we have um, an auditing firm. And both of them can provide us services, so they're both presenting those options to us. Um, Alter Group, our accounting firm has uh, sent us a paper, um. Kind of presentation and uh, a website access. And um, C Brown and Associates is here uh, with John, so I'm going to kind of give them a floor in a minute. But we have a few options of, you know, continuing with the contractors. Hiring someone full-time to be a finance and HR director, we think that's how we want to go, or we can hire someone full-time. To be sort of an administrator, so they could be an administrative assistant and um, help with the pro, help the contractors with the processing. Um, there may be more options that I haven't thought of yet, but I think that's the ones we've kind of come up with, yeah, Kyle. So I'm going to let C Brown kind of tell us what they can do for us, uh, so that they can go home. And get to bed. John, I think they're with you, yeah, yeah. Hi guys, I'm sorry for the confusion on the location.
That's alright, I think I didn't read the memo properly, I, maybe it didn't drop down in front of me and smack me in the face, so. No problem there, how are you, how's everyone doing?
Good.
Good, I'm Calvin Brown and with me is my partner Charles Harrison. We are currently the firm that uh, that align with your accounting firm to uh. Help you get through the audit every year and make sure that everything is done quickly and in in an order. Tonight, we would like to, um, you know, first, thank you for giving us an opportunity to discuss the proposal of providing. Financial back office uh, support services to the town of Upper Marlboro, um, and we hopefully, if selected, we'll begin this, um. This um, program, maybe the first of April, if you guys see fit, um. Our firm consists of professional staff that enable us to provide you with the proper diversification of services. In the most professional and efficient possible manner. Uh, we vision being your back office, financial office by being here three days per week. In addition to twenty-four hours a day access for remote login. This means that the program will, you know, we will be prepared to have the town comply with all the audit requirements of the. Maryland General Assembly Department of Legislative Services and to minimize the non-compliance for audit purposes. And getting your audit done more timely. Uh, C Brown and Associates as your coordinator of finance office will provide the. Uh, services of back office support to improve proficiency and maintain the town's financial records. In accordance with, in accordance with the generally accepted accounting principles. This will ensure that our fi, your financial statement will be prepared timely and in accordance with those standards. Our plan entails um, attending all regular and special meetings that the 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 Board of Commissioners may require. We will oversee the administrative, financial and risk management operation of the town. To include the development of financial and operational strategies and ongoing development and monitoring of your internal control system. Designed to, that will be designed to preserve the town's assets and report your financial statements on accurately. As part of our planning, we will monitor and direct the implement, implementation of any and all strategic business plan that will be. That we will assist in developing with the city manager and the mayor, develop financial strategies. We will assist in managing the capital assets and prepare the annual and operating budget. And organize and control the entire finance office. On the operations side, we will meet with the members of the town management team. Manage the accounting and work with human resources and your legal team. In addition, we will manage the third parties to which auditing and finance function have been outsourced. We will assist in overseeing the transaction processing and the IT systems of the town. Identifying where feasible, implementing new and more efficient methods of operation for the various departments. And remain alert to new and effective methods of fiscal management, including grant applications and administration. We see reviewing your mail and overseeing the implement, uh, the development and dissemination of public information. Keeping the mayor fully advised as to the needs of the town and handle the purchase of all town materials and supplies. So we would be in in work with your town manager and negotiating good contracts. Uh, our office proposes overseeing the issues of financial information to the public. And making monthly financial reports to the mayor and the board of commissioners. We will keep detailed records concerning the receipts and dispersance of the town. The information will be provided to the mayor and the commissioners on a monthly basis. And actual, we will put, we will actually work with the annual auditor to make sure that the uh. Financial statement will be prepared for publications on town website and distributions to the mayor and the commissioners. We will consistently on a daily basis manage your, manage your, uh, monitor your cash balances. And assist with your cash forecast so that you'll know what your operating budgets are doing, uh, ho- operating. How you're operating both budgets are functioning and how your cash management are helping you to maintain. Um, a cash reserve to be able to meet your operating and um, man, uh, daily expenses. Uh, we also understand and will help assist in mitigating the risk, the town risk po, the town's risk profile. Helping to minimize claims and things of that nature. We will work with you on legal issues with your attorney and make sure that the impact that will have on your financial statement is well laid out. So that it can be explained to the auditors. And again, we will construct and help you develop a reliable internal control system. Along with reviewing your insurance coverages to make sure that they're in compliance with your, with your needs. And we will report our risks to the, to the mayor and to the city commissioners. And we will report all risks to, to the mayor and to, to city commissioners. That is, I told, I was told we had about ten minutes. So I gave you a quick overview as to what we, uh, vision would be needed to, um, backfill for your director of finance. So we've laid out a detail, we can lay out a detailed proposal on how we deem we will deliver those services. So that's it, President Franklin.
Thank you. Yes, um, I, I think the other commissioners are going to say, you know, we want to kind of see more of the proposal, but let's see, does anyone have any questions?
Um, no, that would have been my statement, just being able to see the full proposal. But thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah, right.
And, and I like to say something too. Yeah, I just want to let you know too that my name is Charles Harrison. That this proposal was actually proposed to y'all about, what about two years, about two years ago, the same, the exact same proposal. We, we were, uh, asked by, I guess, one of the, one of the other presidents of, yeah, of Upper Marlboro to present something to help y'all backfield a lot of things. And we, and there's really this proposal. That's how, so that's how we got it together so quick. Cause all we did is just go, uh, look into that, look into what we had proposed to y'all a couple of years ago. We were, we were the staff members that actually cleaned up all your financial records about three and a half years ago when we were asked to come on. So we are not new to Upper, Upper Marlboro. We've, we've been on, on staff with y'all now. Actually, this is probably our fourth year now. So we are very familiar with your finances. And that's why we was asked to actually give a full-blown out, uh, financial proposal a couple of years ago. When they was actually really thinking about bringing us aboard, so bringing us on board.
Well, thank you. That's good to know.
And as I said, we are working, we work every year with your auditors to, uh, make sure that those financial statements are properly addressed, uh, through the audit process.
Does anyone else have any questions? Commissioners? And Commissioner-elect. Okay. I know the public is going to have questions for us on this topic, so I, I am going to allow it, but we're going to let, um, our contractors who came out here at night, get back to their beds. Cause it's, uh, it's tax season for them. Coming out, okay, back to your calculator. And tax forms, right? Right. Thank you guys so much. I'm sorry I'm not at town hall to say hello and meet you.
No problem. What should be our next step with respect to, um, how you guys would like to proceed?
If you can submit us something in writing, um, because we'll probably be considering that over the next few weeks. So the sooner we get that from y'all, the sooner the commissioners can, um, get a chance to look at it. I'm, I'm the only one who's full-time at town hall. So the more time they have to squeeze in, review, the better for them.
Okay, sounds good. Alright, we'll give you something on in a day or two then.
Okay, thank you so much, guys.
Good night.
Thank you.
So I know this is a big thing, um, with the whole changes. So I do want to give the public a minute. If anyone has any comments or questions that they would like us to consider. And then we're going to get back to administrative and staff items and finish up for the night. Anyone, John?
I have nobody. Nobody can raise their hand, nope.
Alright, then, um, I just have two things and then I'm going to give it back to you, Kyle. Um, one, we are getting ready to reopen town halls. So we are working on a reopening plan for town hall, um, that we'll probably discuss at the next meeting on the twenty-second. Um, so just so everyone's aware that's happening. Um, and then with regards to annexation, I, the, the lawyer and town administrator and I finally got my guidelines for looking through the uh, referendum forms that came in. Um, so those have to be published for at least five days before I can verify anything. So those are published on the website. If anyone wants to look at them and submit comments, to take a while because we've never done it before. So, uh, next time we'll be, uh, ready to go with them. And then Kyle, do you have anything else going on?
Uh, COVID test distributions tomorrow, um, from three to five, we have, uh, five hundred test kits to give away. We're giving out two per household. That's not just Upper Marlboro, since that, that's countywide. Um, and then once we give those away, the, the county is five hundred more test kits for us to give away. Um, so that's tomorrow, three to five, town hall. Um, tell everyone, come on out. Um, if any commissioners, um, want to come help distribute, um, feel free, um. But I think that's the only item I have so far.
You said three to five?
Three to five, yeah. Three to five P M tomorrow at town hall. Well, pride Board of Education parking lot, but you'll see where we are.
Depends on how many people show up. And we'll publish the link if you want to chat with me, uh, Saturday. I guess we'll publish that on the website or somehow.
Yeah, we're doing, uh, putting that on Nextdoor, Marlboro Nextdoor.
Oh yeah, I'll do that too.
Yep. And we'll put it on the website as well as a calendar, um, invite.
Okay, I just want to make sure people who are here know where to find it without having to go all over the place. So. Okay.
What is Nextdoor?
Uh, it's an app. I'll show you.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, so this is just a slide that tells you when to come out and join a committee. It's fun, people. It's good times. And I guess we're done. Are we ready to adjourn? Do we have a motion to adjourn, adjourn?
Can I just say something real quick?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
So I need Commissioner Hanchit Lot and Duckett to see me so that you can pick up something. Um, please do not go to town hall without seeing me first. Now I'll leave it at that. Or you can call me tomorrow.
May I ask you a question, uh, chief?
Yes.
I'll see you tomorrow in the morning. Is that okay to say? Oh.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I'll be there in the morning.
Okay. So chief, uh, what time are you in?
Eight.
Okay, because I have a flight to catch. Okay, so yeah, I'll stop by around eight thirty.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
So what is that for?
Yeah, just pop in and see. Are you off tomorrow?
I have to work at nine.
Yeah, you can come in before, um, before or, you know, when you get off. But I'll text me and I'll explain.
Okay.
Also, Commissioner like Colbert's being sworn in on Monday.
Well, that's right. Yes. Yeah, and that's going to be at town hall. We still have capacity restrictions, but it will be nice if you could come and welcome in.
What time?
That's at six.
Six o'clock, six o'clock P M. We can also set up a Zoom link so people can watch it from their homes if they'd like. We will do that.
And I think the clerk of the court is coming out for that. Um, and we might have some other elected officials there. We'll see. So it should be good times had by all. Right. Am I forgetting anything else? I'm a little scatterbrain today, I think. Sorry, guys.
Only other thing I can think of is, um, we're working to set up, uh, time for headshots to be taken of commissioners. Both IDs and the website. And so everyone has a matching headshot. So just watch out for an email from that. We're going to set that up for maybe, uh, a, a day in the afternoon, people getting off work and stuff like that. So just throwing that out there for the commissioners.
And just a reminder, the March regular town meeting will be held on Tuesday, March twenty-second at seven P M. Uh, don't forget, the meetings now have switched. Uh, so this is our board work session for March and at the end of the month, of course, is our regular town meeting.
I'm Kyle. Thank you, John. So Kyle, are you saying that in the next two weeks, um, you're looking to do this in the next two weeks?
Headshots, yeah, uh, sometime in March.
Oh, okay. Alright, so, uh, thank you.
Are we ready to adjourn now? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, so move, motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Alright, that's everyone. Alright. Good night, we will speak and, um, we'll keep in touch about the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.